All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town of Walpole Select Board Meeting. It is Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. With the time now being past 7:00 p.m., we'll get the meeting called to order. If over will complete stand, we'll start with the page of the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the first order of business for us tonight is a public hearing for tax classification. It's listed at 7:05, so we have one or two minutes here before we can open that public hearing. So what we'll do is we'll just jump down to the next order of business under that, which is a vote to award bid contract 2026-04, RFP answer for assessors recertification program. Jim, if you could.
Yeah. Recommend favorable action here in the amount of $79,000 for bid contract number 26-04. It's for the three-year agreement for certification of FY '27, FY '29 recertification program with Vision Government Solutions, something that comes up every few years. Dennis has reviewed this. He's comfortable with it and recommend favorable action on this one.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment or questions from the board on this?
Nope.
It's pretty standard. Make a motion to award 2026-04 assessors recertification program to Vision Government Solutions, Inc.
I'll second that.
We have a motion as second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 400. And why don't we, Glenn, just do the consent agenda in minutes real quick, please?
Sure. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion as second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 400, the motion passes. And minutes?
Yep, make a motion to approve the minutes of November 4th, 2025, as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion as second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes 400. All right, so now that we've gone through a couple of minutes here, we're going to go ahead and move to the public hearing for tax classification for determination of residential factor for tax rate for fiscal year 2026. That's a mouthful. I would hear a motion to open the public hearing. So moved?
I'll second it.
We have a motion as second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 400, so we are now in a public hearing. And I would invite the Chair of the Board of Assessors, Jack Fisher, to come up and give us his update on the tax classification determination residential factor. Jack?
Thank you.
Thank you.
As always, it's a pleasure. This is the annual, this is the annual hearing to establish the, if, if the board wants to shift some of the tax burden from residential to commercial, industrial, and personal property. Okay? As a result of that, we can set the tax rate. But what it is, is this is the, this is one of the latter steps in a year-long process that began before Christmas last year when we started with the budget process. We take it all the way through the, the updates. It's a multi-step process. The state gets involved at multiple times to certify different portions of our work, and we have certified values right now. And so what we're looking for, for you to do, we will give you the information with a recommendation and then ask that you vote on a residential factor, which will go ahead and result in a tax rate for residential versus commercial, industrial, and personal property. Okay? And done a little bit differently. You have the package that we usually give you, and then rather than flip back and forth between pages, the staff put together a very good PowerPoint presentation. I think we're going to hit the high spots, and we can talk through it. Any questions that you have, please ask. As I said, this is, the purpose of this is to establish the allocation of the tax levy between the different classes of property. Okay? And as a result of that, you do get a tax rate out of that. It's a multi-step process, just some key points that might be interested. The average single-family assessment went up about, just about a little under 6% up to a value of around $831,000. The average commercial-industrial assessment went up about 4%, and I, we didn't have the value in there because it's very different between the commercial and industrial. The current shift of 1.3, that saves the average taxpayer in Walpole $285, $289, excuse me. I'm sorry, $395, okay? The average increase, the expected with that, with that value is one point, that shift of 1.3 is $289 increase, but by having that shift, you're going to save $395. This is evaluation by class. I think it very clearly demonstrates the situation that we have in Walpole. 89% of the valuation of property in Walpole is residential. You have, you have commercial of 4.67%, industrial a little over 3%, personal property a little under 3%, and so your total is 100%. But that's the issue in Walpole. We just have a lot of residential, 89%. It's a small increase from last year. Okay. Assessment by property types, you can see the, in the residential side, the vast majority of what we have is single-family, and we do have a significant number of condominiums. We do have some two-family and three-family homes, apartment complexes, and so forth like that, but residential properties are 8,837 residential properties in Walpole. Industrial, 238. Commercial, 273. Personal property accounts at 318. The bulk of the valuation on, on personal property is that locally assessed utilities, that's EverSource, National Grid, and Star. How we calculate the levy, if you look down on the bottom right-hand side, that probably shows you very clearly how we calculate the levy. It's last year's levy plus new growth plus 2.5%. So that gives you the levy limit, then you add to that the debt, debt exclusion, which is primarily the middle school right now. And so our levy limit, the maximum that we can, can have or raise by taxation, property New growth, new growth is important. Mass General Law allows cities and towns to go ahead and to increase their tax levy by what's known as new growth. That's increase in valuation that's not attributed to just simply inflation, but because of changes to the property additions, new, new, new construction, et cetera, like that. Okay? The state takes a very, very hard look at it. It's probably the last number that they certify because this is, this basically exceeds 2.5. So they take a hard look at it, and you can see what's happened to new growth over the course of the last several years. Back in 2022 and 2023, we had a significant growth, new growth in there. Actually, I think I was playing. Sorry. Got in trouble again. 21 and 22. All right, that's due to the, the new residential properties that were constructed in the center of town. But this, this allows us to raise money in addition to the 2.5%. Shows it quite nicely. Establishing the tax rate, basically, we've got, we've got the town budget. Administration worked really hard to get us a balanced budget passed by a town meeting, and so there are two components to that budget. There's the money that can be raised from property taxes, which is that tax, which is that levy limit, $98,361,343, and there's the other estimated receipts, receipts from the cherry sheets, grants, internal fees, and so forth like that, building permits and such like that. So that's how we arrive at a, at a final budget of $151 million and change. One of the questions that always comes up is, well, how does Walpole stand relative to our neighbors in Norfolk County? So this is a table that shows it quite nicely. Wellesley has the, the highest tax rate, I'm sorry, the highest average residential tax bill, and Walpole is down there somewhere around the midpoint. Okay? One of the things that I have to point out, if you sorted this slightly differently, if you, if you saw those towns, those, that had the, a, a large, a large shift of 1.5 or somewhere up there, what it is, is those towns tend to have much higher commercial, industrial property. Okay? Walpole is kind of down, we're not, we don't have a lot of commercial, industrial property. As I said, we're, we're at 89% in residential, and yet we are pushing, starting to push up in the 1.3 range. Single phone, single-family home history, what we see is the, the changes, the average changes in value. If you go back over the last 10 years, we're up an average value right now in Walpole of $831,000. That's the average valuation in Walpole in, in the current fiscal year. This is an interesting chart. It shows you the breakdown in various price ranges for the different houses in Walpole. If you look down in the bottom right-hand corner, though, it tells you that over 1,500, 1,500 properties have a valuation of over $1 million. The valuations are getting up there. So even though we have an average value of $831,000, there's still a significant number of houses that are values over $1 million. This is the what-if scenario. What's going to happen to the tax rate for different residential factors, different shifts? For the 1.3 shift, okay, the residential factor, which is what you actually vote on, is .9630, And what you do is you have the different tax rates. Something that's, that, that you always want to take a look at is what's the impact of different shifts on the different categories of property? So for example, Walpole, if we, if you retain the current shift of 1.30, okay, the average tax bill is going to be $10,346, okay? The average increase will be $285 or under 3%. Looking at it from a commercial-industrial at the 1.3, all right, the average, the average increase will be $119, and the, for the industrial side, it'll be plus an increase of about Okay? So at this particular point in time, the board, the Board of Assessors has voted to recommend that you keep the same shift of 1.30. One of the very significant things about it is that if you look carefully at what, just a single, single change of one, one-tenth of 1.0 from 1.3 to say 1.31, what will happen is, going from 1.0 down to 1.31, what you're going to do is you're going to save about $9 on the average residential tax bill. On the commercial side, though, you're going to go up $182. So that's about a, for every dollar that you save on average for the residential property, your residential, your commercial-industrial is going to go up about $20. It's very significant, and that's simply because of the imbalance between residential and commercial-industrial in Walpole. And given, you know, given the fact that there's so many small businesses in Walpole, I mean, yeah, we've got the Walmart, we've got the Siemens and so forth like that, but this is average, and when you look at the average, what's going to happen is it's going to particularly hit the small businesses hard. So our recommendation is that you continue with the 1.3. It's, if you go up, it's, it's, for all intents and purposes, impossible to come down because the impact of, of reducing it is just very, very significant. So that's our recommendation. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer it.
Very good. Well, thank you, Jack. I appreciate that. Very, very thorough and detailed, as always. Any further comments or questions from the board? Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Jack. I appreciate that. This is one of the more important things we do every year, almost as important as appointing firefighters, but this is, this affects everybody in Walpole. And, you know, in the past, I was always hesitant for any increase in the shift, and I know we, a couple of years ago, we went from 1.275, I think it was, to the current 1.3. I voted against that, so I certainly would have support not increasing it from here for all the reasons you stated. The impact on commercial is so dramatic. For every dollar that it saves the resident, costs 20 on the commercial side, and that's, that's, you know, it's a big impact. So the ship is, is good where it is. I liked it where it was, but I'm okay where it is now. So, thanks.
Anybody else?
I would just say whoever made the new slideshow, great job. I read both packets, but this is certainly much easier to follow, and I didn't have to dig through, you know, 39 pages, so whoever did a great job.
Well, it's, it's a team effort, okay? I should, I shouldn't introduce, we have Drew Delaney, who's, who's the new member of the board, Dick Zakaro, who's been on the board for several years. We have our staff, Dennis Fliss, who's been here for a long time, and Joe Roach, our new deputy.
Yeah, great.
Welcome.
Team effort, and glad to do it.
Jack, can you clarify for me, so the 1.3 shift, what does the residential factor translate Do you have the, can you just tell me what the residential factor is?
Oh, the residential factor is, all the way back, bottom of the first page.
It's 0.9630?
9630.
It's 0.2630? Thanks.
Yep.
Yep. Thank you.
9630.
All right, great. Joe?
So first of all, I just want to thank you, Jack, and everyone who's involved in this process, and the Assessors Office, and the Assessors Board. This is a lot of work you guys do, and it takes a long time, and it's important work, as Glenn said, so I just want to thank you for the great work that you do. And as Mark said, the information you've given us is always extensive and gives us a lot to look at and a lot to think about. As I went through both presentations, I concluded the same thing that you guys have concluded, which is it doesn't make sense to change the shift at this point. So without getting further into it, I, I think you're, you're on the, you're in the right spot, and I appreciate, again, the hard work that you have always done and your team does, so thank you.
Great. All right, thank you, Jack. It is a public hearing. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak? Mrs. Zakaro, please.
Good evening. Richard Zakaro, elected Board of Assessor member. It's a pleasure serving on the board. We have an excellent staff. Like to thank Dennis and Joe for putting this presentation together. They always do a great job. I'll keep it real brief because I know you're going to, you have a lot of activity tonight. Just a few comments. I think it's wonderful that our assess property values are going up. I think it's wonderful that we have a lot of new growth coming in, in apartments and whatnot, but as we all know, new growth calls for added services, that calls for more taxes. During the course of the year, we look at a lot of economic hardships, especially with seniors and people on limited fixed income. I said in the past, it's great that the property values go up if you're selling your house, but if not, you have quite a tax burden, as most communities do. I know you're going to pay for services, but I see a lot of seniors that are doing reverse mortgages, some of the abatement forms, and economic hardships, Title 18s. These people are virtually living on limited savings in their social securities. We do have several tax relief programs, as we all know, and I think it's time that we may consider, I brought this up before, as some communities do, and the state and Rhode Island, when the seniors become a certain age and they have limited income and they have no other turn to pay their taxes, maybe it's about time to take a look, feasibility of holding their tax assessments and the tax rate, and I think that would help them tremendously. And I'd be more than happy, as I said before to the board, the selectmen, I volunteer my experience and time to serve on any additional tax relief committees. I'm on two of them now. So I thank you for the opportunity to come before you, and hopefully you consider some additional tax relief. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Anybody else for the public hearing? Any further comments from the board? Being that there is none, I'd hear a motion to close.
Motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
We have a motion as second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 400, the public hearing is now closed. Glenn?
I make a motion to adopt a shift of 1.3 with the residential factor of 0.9630 for fiscal year 2026.
I'll second that.
We have a motion as second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 400, the motion passes. Very good. All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
All right, so, oh, sorry, one more. Oh, no, we did that first.
To authorize the town administrator.
Oh, I haven't done that one. You're right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Motion to authorize the town administrator to submit the results of this hearing on behalf of the Select Board to the Mass Division of Local Services Gateway System.
I'll second that.
Motion as second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 400, thank you, Efa, for keeping us honest. Okay. All right, folks, so everyone got a little impromptu update on tax classification and the inner workings of that. If Fire Chief Olveri could come on up, we'll get started with that portion of our meeting. I appreciate everybody's patience. Unless you want to talk more about tax classification, Paul?
He wants his budget. Thank you for having us before you tonight. The last time we before you was September 9th, and cause of service to date are 4,361. Again, that's up from 276 over the same time point from last year. Just a couple of incidents to report upon. We had a small fire on Coppin Road during our open house. It was quickly contained, a little more of a significant one on Brook Street, and there was a working fire during the day. The family was, nobody was home at the time. There was one dog that was safely removed and found and handed off to friends and family. That was an excellent job by our members containing that fire, knocking that down very quickly. Noah and Westwood provided assistance on the scene, and Fox recovered the town while we were tied up with that. We did have a unique incident during early October, where Group 4 responded to Ginley Road and for a search for a missing person. Through the coordinated efforts of Walpole Dispatch, Walpole Police, Mass State Police, and our firefighters, the person was located, rescued, and transported, transported to the hospital. Fantastic multi-agency coordination by Oho participated that night and just showed great, great teamwork to, to save a life. The drought status, as of November 7th, the Mass, Massachusetts drought map reports Walpole has returned to a, a normal level. We do urge all residents to continue to use caution and conservation. And then a reminder, the Massachusetts open burning season is from January 15th through May 1st. Must obtain a permit through the Walpole Fire Department prior to considering burning, and then each day that they want to burn, that the residents want to burn, they must call to see if the atmospheric pressure is, the atmosphere, weather is supportive of that request. An apparatus update, our, the ambulance that we ordered last December is still online for a December 26th. That's December 2026 delivery. The engine that was ordered the same fall is still projected for a fall 2027 delivery. So still a ways out, but they're, they're moving forward. We haven't heard any negative dollar figures or any tariff issues with that, so. The budget was submitted Friday. My thanks to Mary Timmeltie for doing the very detailed work on finalizing that for us, and our current budget is online where we should be at this point in time. Training, our on-duty members, on-duty training continues as call volume warrants and allows. Many of our newer members are working on their driver trainings. You see our apparatus moving about and trying to gain experience and knowledge throughout that process. Many members are taking multiple classes at the Mass Fire Academy. Deputivo continues to conduct on-duty EMS training as well, and BLS refresher was conducted this last, was completed this last Friday for our senior members who are still at that level, so well done on that. Open house was conducted by, was coordinated by our longtime Safe Coordinator, Lieutenant Armstrong, and that was a great, great attendance as we coincided that with the, our Rec Department's Halloween festivities. My thanks to all the members who helped to make that a fantastic day for our visitors. Something that's coming up that I just wanted the board to keep, keep in their thoughts as we are, the World Cup will definitely, this, this next spring will definitely present some challenges for our operations, and just something that we're keeping in, keeping in mind, and we'll keep the board updated on our, on our thought process on that, but it'll definitely make some logistical challenges getting around town during those, during those incidents. Personal update, no change in our current staffing from where we were last month, last time before you. We do have some sad news to report. Our retired Captain Kyle Silvernell passed away on October 15th. Kyle was a training officer for many years and conducted the initial training for three current members and was a great, great indoctrination to the fire service for us and a great firefighter and a great dad, so. Our sympathies go out to his wife, Mary Beth, and his children, Brian, Matthew, and Megan. I'd also just like to take a moment to extend my appreciation to the members of Walpole Fire Department. Each quarter, I and my predecessors have come before you and continue to explain that our call volumes have gone up. That directly is, puts the workload on the backs of our firefighters and fire officers via the structure fire, traumatic EMS response, or public system, even, even a counted en route. Our firefighters do a great job day in and out, and I'm very thankful for their participation in making, making all of us safer. That concludes my, my quick report tonight. Any questions you may have, I'd be glad to answer before I segue into introducing hopefully three new members before you.
Yep. Thanks, Chief. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Nope.
Nope. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
So we are very excited to bring this group of candidates about to present before you. I have three strong, all three candidates have strong ties to Walpole. All three have been vetted by our Initiative Hiring Committee, consisting of Captain Stacy, Lieutenant King, firefighters Jenks, and Gab. The committee recommended these individuals move forward to the process, and the process to be met by the chief officers, and they impressed us very nicely. We look forward to the opportunity to bring them on board if everything goes well tonight. With that, I'd like to introduce the first candidate, Thomas Shea. Thomas is a Walpole resident and a graduate of Walpole High School. His education, work ethic, and diverse skill set make him a well-rounded candidate to be presented before you tonight, so with that.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. As a lifelong Walpole resident, it would be a pleasure to serve on the Fire Department. I've been working on becoming a fire for, for, for a very long time. I went to the University of New Haven, and I got my bachelor's degree in fire science. Following that, I've been working as an EMT, getting hands-on experience for over a year now, and I'm currently in my paramedic program, about to complete and get my certification. It would be a pleasure to protect and serve in the community that I call home. Thank you for having me. It was an opportunity, thank you for the opportunity.
Great. Thank you, Thomas. I appreciate it. So what we'll do is just turn to the board here for any other comments or questions they might have for you.
I was going to say welcome, and we're excited to have you.
Thank you.
I would just make a general comment, and this applies to all three of you. You know, I have a lot of faith in the chief, the officers, all the firefighters in the department. I know it's a very hard job, but we have a lot of faith in you as an individual and as a town, and you're coming into a good department, and I think that's a great thing, and I love the connection with Walpole, so good luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great.
Yeah, and ditto that. Congratulations and just pleased to have you join the force. It is nice to have someone from Wapo, another person from Wapo, I should say, join the force. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, Glenn, could you make a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Thomas Shea to the position of firefighter pending successful completion of all pre-employment requirements.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero zero. The motion passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next candidate I'd like to present is William McLaughlin. Bill is also a graduate of Wapo High School and is a United States Marine Corps veteran. Military background, his EMS experience, and his mechanical aptitude all combined to make him a strong and disciplined candidate to present before you. So, with that, Bill?
Good evening. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Chief Barry as well as the rest of the department that is here tonight for the opportunity to be here and speak to you. As you mentioned, I was raised here. Spent over 20 years living in Wapo. Went to high school here. My family still lives here. Following, graduating from Wapo High, joined the Marine Corps, spent four years serving there. Briefly after getting discharged, I went to EMT school and quickly got a job with Boston EMS where I've been since then. Over the last nine months, I've been completing my paramedic school. I should be finishing up around January. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity that will hopefully be provided tonight to serve the town.
Great. Thanks, William. Any other comments from the board?
Welcome and thank you for your service.
Yeah, well, same thing. Welcome. And what I said at first still applies. So, glad you're from Wapo. Glad you're joining the department. So, congratulations.
And same here. Congratulations.
Thanks very much.
Make a motion to appoint William McLaughlin to the position of firefighter pending successful completion of his, of his pre-employment requirements.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes four zero zero. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And last but not least, I have Ryan Pierceak to present before you. Ryan is also a Wapo resident, Wapo graduate. Ryan's experience and ongoing training make him a well-qualified candidate to present before you as well. And I look forward to bringing him up.
Once again, thank you, Chief. And thank you for allowing me the opportunity to stand in front of you all this evening. So, to start out, I've been born and raised, lived here in Wapo my whole life. I've gone through the Wapo school system, graduated Wapo High School. Once I graduated, I obtained my EMT license and have worked for multiple private ambulance companies. And I currently work as a call slash part-time firefighter and EMT for the town of, for the Lincoln Fire Department, responding to a variety of fire and EMS-related emergencies. And it's, it's always been a dream of mine to, to work for the, for the town of Wapo.
Great. Thank you, Ryan.
Hey, we're glad to have you. Welcome and congratulations.
That's the same thing. Congratulations. Glad to have you. And likewise, and you've completed the Wapo hat-trick tonight. So, congratulations and welcome.
Make a motion to appoint Ryan Pierceak to the position of firefighter pending successful completion of all his pre-employment requirements.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero zero. Congratulations, Ryan.
As I always say, our meeting's going to keep going. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. So, you can come up and take a photo if you want, or you can take photos in the hallway. Up to you guys.
Grab seven.
Unless they want to hit Station Two.
Huh?
You're buzzing, aren't you?
You're right, they may want to go back to Station Two.
They probably just want to get going.
I want to hit Station Two.
Chris kind of presented and then kind of at the end, I'm going to say, what do you think? You know, do you want us to focus on one over the other, two or three over the others?
Okay. Alright, so, next order of business is the Fire Station Two feasibility study. And so, we have Chris Blessen of Tape A Architects with us. Good to see you again, Chris.
Yeah, you too.
Alright. If you could, I guess, we'll start with you walking us through the report, the study that you issued. And then we'll get into it with the chief and see what other, you know, questions the board may have.
Okay. Great. And it's really nice to follow that kind of presentation and the need for places to house the work that's happening in the force. And so, it's always a pleasure to be a part of that in any way that we can. So, so we joined forces with the town and a company called ESCI who does response time metric review and looks at, they in particular did an in-depth study of call volume, call response times, calls all over Wapo to understand where, where the department can expand to next if there was an ideal location in consideration of how we deal with Fire Station Two. And so, while they were doing their study, that's not my work, but that's in the report. You saw their study as an appendix. While they were doing their work, us, my team as architects, went and looked at and met with the chief and his team at Fire Station Two and did a little bit of an evaluation there and quickly understood it's, it's, it's small and it's in a tight spot. And so, there's really no place on that property to really expand it or do much with it. And so, it became pretty clear that we also needed to investigate other sites, not only in, in consideration of response times in the work ESCI was doing, but in just in consideration of a physical space to house the need that is sort of increasing in that part of Wapo. And so, our background included that. We took a hard look at that. The current station is just under 7,000 square feet. It's two bays and then has quarters on top of it, on top of the bays. So, it's just stacked and it is not handicap accessible. It has all these, one shower, I think, there for everybody. And so, it presents a lot of complications for the different, the different look of the Fire Department now, but also the different needs of the Fire Department now. And so, knowing all of that, we, we took a deep dive on, on all of these conditions. And so, the process of analysis was really just trying to understand what operational impact Fire Station Two would have on its surroundings, understanding the location, which we derived a lot of information from the ESCI report. And then, trying to frankly be a good neighbor. Wherever we stick a fire station, there's a lot of activity that goes along with the fire station. So, understanding the contextual things around that. Program guidelines, I think the key considerations are around a staff of eight, kind of planning for a future staff of eight, eight individuals there with dorms and bunks to support that. And then all the following on, and the list is in the report that we gave you, but all the following on things that support that, including in kind of one of the big drivers of program at this stage is how many bays do you need and how deep are the bays? And so, these are double-deep bays, three bays. And so, it kind of, it, it really gives a lot more capacity than what's there right now. And one of the complications is, and you can, Chief can mention, talk more about it because it's his, his department, but in order to get the brush truck out, you have to move an ambulance or things like that. And so, it delays response times. And so, we'd like to create a scenario where equipment and response times aren't hampered because of the space that they're in. Our process looked at, I think I looked at a total of like seven or eight sites. And some of them were quickly understandable as like not town-owned sites. One in particular was the mall site. And we looked, we looked at that just because it may have produced an opportunity to, for the town to get creative around public-private partnerships or something like that with a big development that's going on. Maybe something can go in there. But that seemed to be outside of the realms of what can be accomplished. So, we didn't go much further on that. But the ones we did study, you can see in there, there was one on Old Post Road by the school. There was one by the, the water tank site. And, and then another one where it's like currently on High Plains Street, but there's a, there's some electrical cabinets on, on that side if you're going up the street. And then Washington Street was one, and that's just at the Byrd School site, or the new middle, Wapo Middle School site. And then, we looked at the one at the intersection of Coney Street and Route One. And when we looked at that one in particular of note, and I just want to kind of spend a minute on that one because that became the preferred one from our firm. It doesn't mean it has to be your preferred one, but just based on its context and not, like again, I said, location is important. And all the other ones happen to be in more residential-type neighborhood, single-family homes. And so, and, and also the response times were sort of difference between response times of these locations were quite negligible and not, not material. So, the reason I liked the Coney Street and Route One site is because that part of Wapo is, is kind of, it's, for me, when I'm coming to Wapo from other places, it's often one of the places I'll get off of 95 and come down that street. And it, it would actually bring a pretty civic, nice civic presence to that intersection on Route One. And I don't know if that's desirable, but I think a fire station could help Wapo there. But it also gives the Fire Station and Fire Department easy access to major thoroughfare and it's a site that's available in a commercial kind of setting. And it seems like a lot of the expansion may be heading in this direction anyway. So, the complications with this site is it is tight. All of them actually are tight. And so, ideally, we could have more space, but there's not a ton of open, already owned Wapo sites, already town-owned sites in Wapo in this area to look at. But another complication is it's currently under conservation control. And so, that would require Article 97 process to re-lease it from that. And then, depending on, I outlined some of those requirements in the report, but it seems it's not impossible. And we've done it before on other projects to do that. And then just identify maybe other parts in town that you can transfer back into, like swaps or whatever the deal may be. And then we also would need to do a pretty intense traffic signal and traffic study for that corner. But those are all parts of next steps. If you choose one or two of these sites that are like, those are interesting and intriguing, you could go a little bit deeper on those and we could really study the outcomes. In particular, with this, this site, we did kind of two options to study that. And one of them, like, it's just about circulating around the fire station and how you access the bays and, you know, pull in, pull out, all those kind of things. And that would be something we would go into more depth with the chief and the operations to understand which one's more ideal. And then there's other things you can do around planning fire stations to get more. So, the bottom line is that we think a fire station in the range of, I put in the report, 18,000 square feet seems to be what would support well a fire station Two with all the modern fire operations and turnout and all the things you need for a station and respond, like, after returning from a call, there's all these processes that they can't do well at Station Two. And then the additional bay and the depth of the bays. And so, that probably can be refined when we study it, or when it gets studied deeper in the next round. And then we went to a third-party cost estimator and kind of surveyed about eight or nine projects that are currently coming back from bids on, on this, for fire stations, either central stations, which tend to be a little bit bigger and complex, and also substations. And the pricing that we were getting was, I think I wrote it in here, yeah, is in the range of, for this project, in the range of 15 to 20 million total is what we were thinking. The sort of order of magnitude should be held for a fire station like this in Wapo. And that's, that's just a square foot number that we were given by our third-party cost estimator multiplied by the 18 to 20. Jim wants to look at a sort of more efficient way to build, maybe pre-engineered metal buildings or something like that. And I think that may have some impact, downward impact on the budget. But it's hard to know exactly what that is until you get into a little bit more design and you do some site exploration. Because what, what's under the site is unknown until we get there. And so, those, those are kind of the pressures that would swing that number in particular. So, with that, I trust you've had a time with the report and maybe you have questions for me or want to engage on that a little bit more.
Yeah, for sure. I guess, let's take some questions here for, for Chris and kind of step through everything that he's covered. And then I'd like to hear from the chief as well after that. So, does anybody have any questions or comments yet?
I have a couple of questions. The first is maybe for the chief, but has to do with the apparatus that we'll be using Station Two. Are you building it for example Tower One? Or are you saying Tower One will never go to Station Two? Are you building it for, when it's double bays, I assume that's six brush trucks and, and engines and ladders? So, could you give you an idea?
Sure. So, operationally, right now, we operate an engine, an ambulance, and a brush truck out of Station Two out of East Wapo. As Chris had mentioned earlier, in order to move the, the brush truck out, it's back behind the ambulance. We have to pull that out. So, knowing where we are and where the town is growing to, we're trying to define, I guess, future growth. This is difficult to do right now. So, we're looking forward if, that may be a need for a, a larger aerial apparatus at some point in time down there. So, if, if we have the space, if we have the funds, if we have the operational support, we'd be better off, I think, in my opinion, to, to build the station out for future growth. So, maybe it would hold a, be large enough to hold an aerial apparatus down there.
Would a double bay hold one tower? I mean, you could, you, could you back up two trucks to, with the tower and?
So, it would, again, I guess, depend on what we could, what could, what magic Chris could work for.
Yeah, okay.
But it's, but it's, right now, Station One is, we do back-to-back on the apparatus and they can drive out either way. We have the tower and we have another piece of apparatus that can't fit behind it. So, it's, so it just provides, you said, more flexibility as opposed to kind of being hamstrung into one tighter spot. Unless that's all we have, then that's, we'll have to work with. But.
Makes sense.
The schematics, just to follow on that, the schematics that we've done so far, planning for the, the bays to be around 85 feet long.
Okay.
Which, a lot of the larger ladders are in the 44-feet-ish range. And you can get a little shorter, a little longer, depending on what you buy.
Gotcha.
But that should accommodate a decent-sized aerial and an, and an engine or two engines or something like that. So.
Okay. And a follow-up for, I think, Chris, on the Coney Street site, is it 1.4 acres, that site?
Roughly.
And how much of that is not usable? It seemed like there may be some wetlands. I, I haven't been to the site, but you know, is there, basically your drawing, it appeared that there was a part of that site that you avoided. Is that, how much of that 1.4 is usable?
It's, it's, I didn't do the acreage on that. On the, it's the more like southern tip as it, so the site is an odd shape. It starts kind of wide where the turnaround is, coming, if you're going northbound on Route One.
Yeah.
And you do the turn and it's got this cutout for the large swing trucks or whatever. So, it's kind of set back a little bit. And so, there's a wider section at the Coney Street side. And then it swings down pretty tight to Route One.
Yeah.
And then it opens up a little bit on the end. And it's just, it's just like, it could be used, but it's not, it's not really accessible and it's not necessarily needed.
Gotcha.
And so, the part of the site that we're on is probably concentrated more in the one to one-point-something square, the acreage in the north corner of it.
Got it. The other site that stood out to me, and I think this is, I want to make this comment, is the High Plains Street site, which is just over an acre itself. And I think most of it is, if not all of it is usable. Setbacks are restrictive. This restriction, Article 97 is, requires two-thirds of the state legislature to, to be on your side. So, everything's got restrictions and obstacles. But I do think that that one, along with the Coney Street site, are our two best contenders. I think the biggest issue, tell me if, I think you probably agree, is that it's not, wouldn't be a pull-through at the High Plains site. And that's an obstacle that is not great.
It wouldn't. Although, if you study, if you study the, the maps close enough, there is on, on the backside of High Street, in this parcel in particular, there is a paper, on paper, there's, there's a path that could be utilized.
From where?
Maybe access from the street. Maybe access from the street that's on the backside. I don't remember what the street name is, but it's not identified anywhere, but the parcels, the way they're laid out is just kind of, the road looks like it could extend. I haven't studied it at all, but when I was looking at this, I was like, oh, that's intriguing. I don't think you'd probably ever use it for a, you know, a fire truck coming down through. But it, the problem with that site is that it virtually requires, if they're coming back from a response, they're going to hold traffic up and have to swing wide and then back into the station, which is fine. But it's just a complication for High Street. It's not the least trafficked road in Walpole.
No, it's not. But we're looking, but it's a very good site for a lot of reasons. Perhaps the traffic is good. I mean, it's a high-traffic road, we want our fire apparatus to have direct access to, but also an obstacle and complication. I mean, I look at cities. I mean, we're lucky to have an acre. If Boston had an acre of land to build a fire station, they'd be jumping for joy. So for us, I don't want to dismiss that quite so quickly.
Yeah, yeah. I agree. I agree. I agree with your thoughts.
Yeah, thanks.
Anybody else? Questions or comments?
So a couple. So just thinking about, you looked at sites that the town currently owns, and that's the smart thing to do, obviously, if you own the land, that's one hurdle to get past. But I can't help but think in terms of where is the ideal location for a second fire station, given the shape of the town, the growth of the town, the new challenges that face the fire department today? You know, if you were to just say, thinking about response times and the types of incidents that we need to respond to, where in Walpole would be an ideal location for Station Two?
Yeah, it's, it's this, this area that's like kind of circle that we've been looking at is kind of it. And like I was saying, when they do, ESCI would be the expert on this. So I'm interpreting their data, looking at it. And we had meetings with them, so it's not just a whimsical interpretation. But the data is kind of showing, you know, the developments that are happening over there and that that area is kind of in the hot zone. And the complication that you have is when you go, you know, it's kind of, the angle of it's hard, but like, there's not a good road that goes straight, is it north? Kind of northwest-ish. And there's the lake up there. And then there's still response that they have to get to over there. And so it's really about, in my opinion, how quickly you can get onto these roads that actually feed you into the right spot. And if you're tied up in a residential neighborhood, trying to do a bunch of right and left turns to get onto a road that can get you there, it just slows you down. And so this Coney, this intersection was actually one that was like, okay, well, they're kind of in major pathways at that point. But in all of them, in that area, we're pretty much in the ideal zone. It's just the marginal response time differences were something that really probably don't make too much of a difference, but it is data. So there is differences, but it's not, it's not huge. So all of these that are over there, like there's, I think, Byrd Park, and that was one of them. All of it over there was kind of under consideration. And it's like, there's not one that's, that I would categorically say is awful because of its location. It was just worse because of its surroundings, right? And so they're kind of all in the right, right target. And that's what ESCI was doing. I don't think they put a pin and said, this is the spot, because that doesn't exist.
Yeah, well, that's what I was wondering is, you know, are we forcing a spot because we own the land? Or is in fact, this location a spot that we would pick if we could pick any spot? And it sounds like the answer is yes. This is a very good location for a station two, correct?
Yeah, I think so. And I think if you were to push forward, say the two, Coney and High Street, you could drill further into that. You could say, okay, now what are the actual nuances around these? And then maybe if you wanted to entertain it, do another like, are there empty parcels somewhere that may be ideally better? But we actually looked for them and ESCI looked for them. ESCI made a couple of different options too that we didn't study because they ended up not being great on the response times, right? So I think that you've got a pretty thorough analysis of the inventory available. And these all kind of improved, from my understanding of the data, it improved the operation, the response times and recall, the things that the fire department can do, it's improving that from the baseline that we have now.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so I agree with what's been said. I don't think any of the parcels are perfect. Coney Street is pretty good. Is there any chance of more discussion at the Walpole Mall? That's kind of an interesting parcel. I know they have plans up there. I understand why you probably didn't pursue that at this point, but are they open to more discussion if, okay, is there, are there any other commercial parcels where they might be open to discussion?
They haven't, we, excuse me. I brought it up a few times with them and they haven't been jumping at the opportunity. I know they've talked about developing over near Coles, but they're, they were still trying to acquire some residential parcels along there and they haven't been successful. So they've been solely focused on bringing Burlington Code Factory, Shake Shack and something else there. So they haven't been focused on any.
And more development is good at the mall. So more stores is a good thing. How about like a Sunbird? Or I'm just sort of thinking off the cuff of, you know, big spots I've driven by. I know they park Teslas there all the time, but.
I didn't even approach them, yeah.
So private land, I mean, we should, it'd be nice to have a sense of this private land that is not going to be a budget buster, but is an option.
Yeah, I'm just sort of thinking out loud. So I do like it being near, very near Route One. It seems like that's where a lot of the action's going to be, you know, going forward. So just a thought.
We're happy to help Jim and his team chase. If you have contacts or something or sites you want us to look at as a just concept, we're happy to continue to helping, but they haven't come up to date.
All right, great. I just had two, two other questions, I guess. One with Coney Street and Route One. And you had mentioned, Chris, I think in the report, obviously there's the issue of the conservation and having a land swap, which I think is surmountable and something that's done fairly often. But you had mentioned, I think, as well, the signals. And that's a state-owned road.
It is.
And so in terms of coordination with Mastot and changing the signals and doing all of that, are they, are they easy to work with?
So I had a.
What else to say?
Yeah, I had a, I put in a preliminary call to them and they haven't returned my call, shockingly. But I did some research on it and they didn't appear to have regulations on this. And would, the signal, yes, but they, from what I can tell, they would defer to the town's planning ordinances and things that are required there. We definitely have to work in coordination with them, but I couldn't see any regulations that would present like stop challenge.
Yeah, no deal breaker.
On this site. But you know, you have to work with them. So that's definitely.
Yeah. And I think, I guess that's something, as we continue or we consider which ones to move forward with, that would be something that would start very early in the process, just to make sure.
Yep. That and also like just geotechnical, like, like just understanding what's under the ground. Because if you're in a difficult situation underground, you got to know that.
All right, great. If we could, Paul, if we could just hear a little more from you on your, you know, your take on this report, your take on these locations, positives and negatives. If there's one that jumps out at you as, you know, being the preferred one for your operational needs and space needs and.
Sure. No, appreciation to Chris and Tape for diving down deep into this. ESI did a good job quantifying our numbers and confirming that what we thought that East Walpole was our, was our priority, secondary priority response district. And the numbers do justify the second station down there, keeping a second station down there. Station Two was never built or designed, obviously, for full-time occupancy. DPW has done a fantastic job. The maintenance department has done a fantastic job of converting that station for us to use as we could. And when we originally opened it, there was three firefighters assigned down there. And we just ran an engine out of there. And then it was closed. And the board supported reopening during COVID. And the call volume still continued to provide a better response for us down there. In fact, we had a fire right across the street from that. The quick action, the quick arrival of the on-duty crew from Station Two did a super quick knockdown. The, to answer what Jim had mentioned earlier, questioned earlier, East Walpole is definitely the need for it. As far as what specific site, I think all the ones that are presented before you are, have challenges. And obviously, you know, we look to try to be financially responsible with these. Some of the concerns with the schools, the locations on the schools are obviously during drop-off and pickups, dropping my kids off and picking them up during those timeframes from both of those schools. You know, we're difficult at best. And my concern would be coming in and out of there during those timeframes with apparatus and, you know, coming and going two calls. But I understand the opportunity presented to us and we wanted to do our due diligence to investigate those locations. ESI did provide some, as Chris said, some alternative geographical areas, trying to find just pretty nicely circled out areas on the map without identifying any individual lots. But just kind of showed us where, where they thought our best response time would be come from. I was a little concerned about sliding down to Route One. The numbers showed that, as Chris had mentioned, that the differences are negligible on what the response time would pick up some time somewhere else. Maybe there was a little time somewhere. So it's, I think, what's trying to find what, what ideal site would work? And is there an ideal site down in that area? I'm not sure if there is one, but I think what's going to work best for us, Glenn, what you said exactly, there's tighter sites throughout the country with fire stations operating out of, you know, looking at what some of those tighter sites are operating with though, is, you know, is that what Walpole's going to, going to need from, from that fire station that we, that we build? So it's, you know, a lot of stuff to think ahead and think forward. I think the numbers to show that a new station is warranted. And that area, East Walpole, is where to concentrate on and trying to find, except maybe alternative commercial sites that might be a little bit bigger, a little more user-friendly away from residential area.
Yeah. Okay. No, well, I appreciate that. And I know a couple of people have brought it up tonight, but it's true, when you read through that report, the increase in response times was really surprising to me. I mean, you know, 10%, over 10% faster on many, many occasions, which is obviously fantastic. Any further questions or comments from the board? The chief, anybody? Yeah?
I should have said this earlier, but you know, it's clear we need to do this. And that, that station in East Walpole has served us well for many, many years, but it's time to upgrade. And when I even think about things like attracting firefighters and retaining firefighters, the facility is really not helpful that way. And yet, it's a necessary facility and its location has been beneficial. So understanding that and seeing where this potential new location is all makes sense to me. When you then factor in things like the incidents and the population and the time travel that you've got to get to various locations, where the growth is, all that, it all makes sense. So I appreciate the fact that you brought this forth and have given us this update. So thank you.
No, we appreciate the support. I mean, it's just, we're not, for lack of a better term, we're not looking just to, just to build us a new fire station, just to make it, you know, there's definitely a need out there. It's, it's served a purpose for the town for what we've used it for. We've definitely outgrown it. And, you know, to provide a better and safer environment for our firefighters is definitely, definitely warranted down there.
Yeah, yeah, great. Well said, Jim. I agree. All right. So to, in an effort here to wrap up the discussion then, you know, what I'm hearing from the board, and we have all this information, of course, from, from the chief and from Chris and from Tape and everybody, is that it would be reasonable to at least kick the tires on some other locations, other private locations in that area as identified by ECSI. If other board members want to be involved in that, have ideas of their own, they could interface with Jim, look at them, make some calls. And Jim, whether you want to, you know, tap Chris and his folks for help with that or not, you know, that's something that we can discuss and consider. So I think, once we've done that, that seems to me to be a pretty thorough, you know, investigation and thorough review of that geographic area that's been recommended. And I think we can feel pretty good at that point that we've identified all of the possible options. Be that as it may, it seems like there's two front-runners that have really come out here from the discussion, not only from, from the chief and from Tape, but also from the board, with the High Plains Street location and the Coney Route One, Coney Street and Route One location being probably the preferred sites for moving forward on this. So I think the next steps would entail, obviously, collecting all the information on those two and then reassessing, you know, what do we want to do? Do we want to make the decision for one or the other? You know, everyone can kind of take their time to think about it, reread the report. I think it'd be reasonable then to reconvene at one of our meetings, maybe have some more discussion with the chief as needed and say, hey, is there one of these that we really want to dive into now? I know there's an interest of time as a part of this as well, right? We don't want to take too long for separating over this. Do you have any, any input on that?
So just a couple of items. While you folks were talking, I just looked up properties in Walpole in general. Cheapest parcel out there right now for sale is about $600,000 and that's only 29,000 square feet. There's not much out there. One of the reasons we more or less avoid it, and I can definitely reach out to Sunbird, put out a couple feelers, we're just trying to save the cost on this. And I think back to Walpole Woodworkers, how many, ever many years ago, at $4.5 million. It didn't, you know, it got passed town meeting, but it wasn't fast. We, I'd be looking to somehow figure this out without having to go to, go for an override. Because Mark was in my office earlier, we were talking about, you know, upcoming years, we will need to continue to invest in, especially in our elementary schools. There's all these things that I'm very much mindful of. I could certainly explore that. But I think if we had identified these two parcels here, I'd like to do a little bit more research. Because I think in the report, it mentions there's some underground utilities possibly at the High Plains site. And I remember when we did all the earthwork on that, it was some, it was high levels of PCBs and we had to, we had to excavate a whole lot more than we anticipated to get down to acceptable levels. So we still have a considerable amount of money. Town meeting just granted us another $300,000 to continue to study this on top of the funds that were granted the year before. We also got another $100,000 from the state. It hasn't been received yet, but that's part of the earmark process with the state. So we have some money that we can begin to dig down into these a little bit deeper. Obviously, I agree with Chris, the desirable site is the one right near the Walpole Mall that provides plenty of response times. I just want to learn a little bit more about the challenges. I think that's going to take time, but I'm not, time in this particular situation, I think, is our ally. Because I got to figure out, the longer the cost is going to go up, but the longer we wait, I also am able to, some things come off. And, you know, believe it or not, we did, it was a 10-year borrowing on the field site. And we started that in 2019, I think it was. So by the time we actually, some of that debt will fall off, we will have paid that off. So I think we can use some of that, those funds to our benefits there. There are some sites, you know, I asked Chris, I said, look at, and I know the cost of going up, but what we did with the DPW site, we did that, it was four bays, million dollars, one drive, two million dollars all in. You know, ideally, I'd love something similar to that. You know, what they have over there is a great setup. It works for us. It's, wouldn't work exactly for the fire station, but you know, could we build something like that with a brick facade and, you know, make it look great from the, if it's on Route One and Coney Street, right there and, you know, save some, save some bucks? I'd like to really explore that. And the prefab building, everything out there, you know, some of the buildings that are going up around town, I think a Tony LaRusso's property over near the kennel, I think of some of the projects that are going on on South Street, those buildings are nice looking. And can we pursue some of those and what would be the cost savings? Maybe they're not 100-year buildings, but maybe 35, 50-year buildings. So something I want to explore. So we do have some money we'll focus in on if we have to do some test pits on some of these sites, we have funds to begin to explore those at the very least, if that's okay with the board.
Yeah, we're focusing on two sites.
Yeah.
Yep. So we have the High Plains site and the Coney Route One site. Take both of those to the next level of investigation to see if there's any deal breakers.
I would just say one thing, I really liked the report. There was a lot of good data in there, especially those heat maps showing four and eight-minute response time. That was really helpful to be able to look at a site and figure out what, what keeps it within an optimal response time. And, you know, we all know that, you know, North Walpole and South Walpole are pretty far to get to from anywhere on Route One or Route One A. So, but it made me start thinking about that as well. But they were very helpful to understand the response time issue.
Great. All right. Any further? All right, any further comment from the board? I think we're clear then on the next steps here? All right, thank you, really appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are past the hour of 8:05. Is there anybody here for open forum?
Happy Thanksgiving!
All right, that being as there is no one here for open forum, we'll step now to new business, which is a discussion and vote on Bird Pond Dam. So, so I'll kick this one off here briefly. We all recall that this board had discussed at length over, over the past year or so, the Bird Pond Dam project coordinated with DCR on the proper avenue to take there in terms of whether the, the dam would be repaired and left in place, and the pond left in place, or whether the dam would be removed and the pond returned to a river. In, back over the summer, this board voted to instruct the DCR that we preferred to keep the, keep the pond, that we would like DCR to go ahead and design and construct a new dam, that the town of Walpole would like input on the controls of that dam, and that it was our preference that DCR would retain ownership of the dam after construction. Subsequently, we heard back from DCR, it took some, it took a couple of months, Jim was very diligent in, in, in pursuing that, and we've heard back from them that they really wanted clarification on the ownership. They reiterated, DCR reiterated that they would not, they would not reconstruct a new dam if the town was not willing to take ownership of it. So it's a good time now, timely discussion to revisit this, to clarify, you know, the town's position on this in terms of what our expectations are. Jim, do you want to?
Sure.
To jump from there in, in time?
So this afternoon, I was able to get in touch with Cindy, who's a legislative liaison at the DCR. She provided some clarification as far as the understanding. I had two specific questions, they gave us two options. Pond retained is what they called option one. Option two is no, no impoundment, which is eventually, essentially putting it back to a stream. They clarified the pond retention, what we would need to do. Bottom line is, they want us to own it at the end and begin the process. They have agreed to moving forward with design permitting. My question is whether or not they also will go forward with construction without us owning it. I think they will, they, they understood that it takes some time to go forward with taking that land. So I feel a lot better since they also agreed to allow for the spillway control devices as part of that, which is something I know this board really was looking for. So with that, I have a recommended motion here to basically advise DCR, the select board wishes to proceed with option one, retention of Bird Pond. Select board agrees to initiate and pursue all the necessary steps to pursue full ownership of the dam parcel at the conclusion of the construction process, and will assume ownership there. They'll be responsible for the construction permitting design, and with, Town of Walpole is responsible for the long-term maintenance of the dam, and install, then they also install the spillways. Treasurer Collector Lisa Sinkus brought to my attention, there is an avenue we can pursue that is actually not necess, it's, it's a form of a tax-taking, it's she called, it's called a land of low value. We recently did that within the last five years with the parcel, right at the bottom of Mansion Drive on Washington Street, right near Hollingsworth and Vos, and H&amp;V ended up buying the two small parcels for, you know, not, not much, they weren't, they were less than 5,000 square feet each, but they just wanted the parcels. That's a much quicker process, so we, I've already reached out to town council through our tax title attorney, Ian Sherrin Everett, who did a lot of the background on this one, and asked them what the process would be, but I got the sense from the, the individual board members that you'd like to get going on this, DCR's kind of outlining the process. As long as we take this vote, they're, they're comfortable with moving forward with this.
Yep, yep, and I, I think one item that I did want to highlight then within this is, you know, we had all, as board members, visited, you know, the dam in Norwood to see how that was operated, and that's where we kind of got this idea, and, and, you know, the Department of Public Works here in Walpole, and, and all the individuals that would be involved in keeping up the dam and, and operating the dam, got a good idea of what that all entails, and got a good idea also then of the types of spillway control devices that can be used, and, and are much easier to maintain, and much easier to control if needed, you know, during storms or, or if something's going to occur. So it's really important that we, we keep that in there. So given all of that, any other questions or, or comments from the board?
I would just comment that, first of all, I, I think us taking ownership is the right thing to do. I also think it was the right thing for us to try to get the state to take ownership of it, because truth be told, it's better to not own the dam than own a dam. But that said, and the way you just described it, Ben, is right, when we visited Norwood, I got very comfortable with the operation of the dam and the costs associated with it, and particularly the longer-term costs. I, I was very concerned about what those might be, and have gotten to the point where I, I just don't see them as a big problem. And so I'm fully supportive of this moving forward with taking another vote on this and, and agreeing to own it, and I think the sooner we get going on it, the better off we all are going to be.
Great. Anybody else?
We make this motion, and we let the DCR know our position, and then we hope that they, is there any sort of a plan for, it's hard to say what the state's going to do and how fast they're going to move, but like, how do we?
Yeah, Jim alluded to it a little bit, that it's, it becomes that a parallel process wherein we try to, we, we try to obtain the land, right, and take the land, and DCR will begin the permitting process and the initial schematic design process. They can only go so far without the town confirming we have the land, but they have said that they have legal room there, that if the town, and I can't remember the exact language, Jim, but if the town has shown.
Good faith.
Good faith, yeah, good legal, legal term, good faith, that they'll then be able to, ought to be able to obtain a permit and move forward.
And I'd like to hold them to that.
Yeah.
I think it's important that, that we do our job, and then we follow up on the state, the DCR, that they will do, if, if they say what you've said they said, that they would, they would do what they've said.
Yeah, absolutely.
And she put all of that in writing.
That's great.
Right, yeah.
Okay, great.
Great.
I'll make a motion that the select board direct the town administrator to advise the Department of Conservation and Recreation that the town of Walpole wishes to proceed with option one, retention of Bird Pond. Furthermore, that the select board agrees to initiate and pursue all necessary steps for the town to assume full ownership of the dam parcel at the conclusion of the construction of the new dam. Upon the town's assumption of ownership, the town will be responsible for the long-term maintenance of the dam. The board acknowledges that DCR has agreed to include spillway control device as part of the final dam construction.
I'll second that.
We have motioned a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 400. Thank you. And last but not least, we will go to the town administrator's update, Jim.
Sure. About four or five things here. Joint meetings with the finance committee. Ben and Denny have been working with me to try to coordinate some dates with the finance committee. I expect that we'll hopefully hold a meeting before Christmas to go over some of the sewer and water issues specifically, the FY27 budget and the MWRA connection. I expect another meeting likely to be held in January with both chiefs, DPW Director Mattson, and if we can squeeze the schools and, at that same meeting, to go over the various department needs and talk, talk a little bit about the budget development process. And once we pin down some dates, I'll be sure to let you know. Denny was checking his schedule, and I know Ben was checking his. I expect the meetings to take place either in the COA or over at the library. The FY27 budgets, I've started to review the sewer and water budgets, I hope to have some recommendations on those sewer and water budgets at the beginning of December, so we can circulate that out much, much before the, the meeting with the commission and the finance committee. Once I wrap that up, I'm going to turn my attention to the general fund budget. They, the budgets were all in the munis last week, Jody's sifting her way through some of those. We have to check and verify all the salaries, make sure everything was entered incorrectly, so that's going to take some time. Town hall will be closed next Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. Town clerk, we did some interviews for the town clerk. I expect that we will have a candidate ready for your consideration, likely at your December 2nd meeting. That is a select board appointment, so I'd like to probably have that person come in, meet with the board formally, and if the board's comfortable with it, proceed with filling that role Liz has been doing on a part-time basis for some time. She's been doing a great job, but I know her and her husband are looking forward to retirement, taking, taking some much-needed trips. And last item, that you may have noticed, the 300th anniversary clock downtown that was set in place last Thursday. I want to give a much overdue thank you to not only the 300th Anniversary Committee, Walpole Co-op, the Royer Tree Service, Anderson Electric. Royer and Anderson donated their services at no charge to the town, and Walpole Coop obviously bought the clock, so a lot of thanks there. Director Mattson, Superintendent Thomas, Patrick did a great job organizing that, coordinating with the clock company, Parks Department, the rest of DPW. A lot of effort went into that. It looks really, really nice, sharp-looking addition to the downtown, so.
Good job.
That'll be great to have in place for the tree lighting next, next week.
Yeah.
That's it.
Great. Any other comments or questions for Jim? Being as there is none, I would here, I'm motioning to adjourn.
Agreed.
Second.
We have motioned a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 400. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and have a good night.